Second, right there, got a second roll call please.
Mrs. H. Shadmore?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kote?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Scolella?
Here.
Mrs. Spazada? Yes. Just to present.
Here. Ms. Wallace, please. You want to introduce the cameras to the people first? Ms. James, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I would just like to welcome everyone back to the new school year. The buildings are all in shape and shining and the kids are all back smiling, so those are good things that are happening. And as of September sixteenth, we are pleased to welcome the new bookkeeper for payroll and pensions. Her name is Joanne Torres. She's coming to us with fourteen years of school district payroll experience. I know the business office is very excited. And I really would like to extend my sincere appreciation and thanks to each and every one of them because they've all gone above and beyond over the last four or five months, especially Ms. Jacenia Gomez, in making sure that everyone continued to receive their paychecks and we were able to try and answer as many questions as humanly possible while still trying to maintain their regular job. So, again, I would really like to extend my appreciation to the staff because they are incredible and they help to make my job a lot easier.
I just have just enough time to thank you, Mr. President. I as well want to welcome everybody back to this exciting time. We're already a week in and it's glad that we missed everyone, but I welcome the staff back as a whole. I said pretty much the same thing, which is that we missed everyone, we're glad you're back. We did a lot of planning, a lot of light work over the summer, and we're really excited to get moving. When we opened with our first day of professional development, we set the mission and our goals for the year. The opening session was extremely well cooperated from the association, from our administrators. As a staff, we moved the entire district through both large group and small group sessions. We talked common language, common vision. We reviewed our building goals for the year. We also talked about what we call our SCIPs, our School Improvement Panels, which mandated by the state, we have kind of combined two different things mandated by the state, our SCIPs and our SPCs, which are the teachers who volunteer their time to make sure that we have appropriate professional development and that the districts and the buildings are moving to support students. So, I want to thank all of them, as well as the members of LPDC. I'm Mrs. Christian Tellis in the room right now, and Ms. Ballany as well. You guys do a lot of work, go out there, work, but we're not before you right there, so thank you. On Wednesday, we had our mandatory HIBP trainings, as necessary. Thanks to Mr. Capello and our counselors for getting together, making sure our staff had that refresher, as well as child awareness prevention. We're making a big push to ensure that as a district, again, working with CSEAC compliance issues, there are state mandated trainings that have to happen either every year, every other year, or every five years. We now have a calendar of all those trainings. We're making sure that our staffs are being trained appropriately within that timeline so they have she have the information and can know, feel comfortable when they're making decisions with a student in front of them, they're making the right decision. So, thanks to all the different teams who have helped with those, Ms. Ballany as well. And finally, on Thursday, our SCIPs went to work. Running trainings on our evaluation system, building goals, common language, again, for the individual buildings. So, and thanks to all those teachers. And it was a big opening. Not only were we trying to get classrooms open and welcome new students and getting to set off in the path of learning, but we were learning ourselves. As well, happy to report that our new materials are all arrived in district. For the most part, they've been assembled as necessary. Both Language Arts and Math, K six and K eight, and our science program at Yule Elementary, and eventually the entire elementary. Looking forward to the trainings that are going to happen with those and really hearing some tentative excitement from teachers. They're excited that it's here, but again, it's new and they're working together to make sure we're leveraging these resources for our students. During the opening week, we also trained on our evaluation system. This is an ongoing process. Again, thanks to the administration, principals, our coordinators and directors. We spent some time talking about student growth objectives and student growth percentile, two components required by the state in the new evaluation system. And again, our focus as always is making sure that we're leveraging whatever is mandated to drive student performance. All of our teachers and staff have been trained in faculty and department meetings. We have a calendar for the entire year to ensure that we're talking about topics within that evaluation system that are relevant to teachers at that time so they can take the learning that they have in the faculty department and put it right to good use. I was able for the third year to get into all of the buildings, all the classrooms, except, and this was the third year, I missed one. I will be in that building tomorrow. In the past, the first day, both Ms. Ballany and I have been able to get to every classroom and see every student. I missed the building, I apologize, and I'll be in that building tomorrow. But again, a lot of excited kids, a lot of, again, concern. As far as it's my first year, what do I do? I've opened more lockers that first day here in this building than I have previous fifteen years of my life. But there's an excitement around the district that's really tangible, even more than just at the beginning of the school excitement. And I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do as a district this year. Academically, professional development. Language Arts, Tier One and Tier Two teachers continue professional development this year. We have a director from Scholastic who will visit each building in the fall and discuss what teachers have utilized, the guided reading libraries, to make sure that that money spent and those new resources in the district are being maximized. All of our teachers began using new math programs. Congrats to them. Professional development being continued. We are using a full day in November. After the teachers have had the opportunity to use the program for two months, we'll bring someone from the company back in to then work with each grade level. Science, as we know, we haven't started science instruction because we held off to ensure that our students receive, our teachers receive their full day of professional development September. This falls in line with our science curriculum. The students are not losing any science time. We're simply redistributing the time. It's always been at the elementary level, split between social studies and science, and we just kind of rearranged when we're doing what, so we're sure the teachers have the professional development before they were teaching the new materials. Speaking of Language Arts, our parent information night. We are in the final conversations with Ms. Klein to identify a specific evening for a parent information night centered on our reworkshop model. We should have that by the end of the week and it will be later on this month. We will make sure we publicize that again on our website through the buildings so parents can come, even people who are naturally at the levels that we use in workshop in can come to find out what we're doing. And part of that is to make sure that parents are certain how they can work at home to support that model and the growth of their children's literacy. Happy to report to the Board of Education that our bilingual waiver was accepted. NJ DOE approved the 2013-14 bilingual waiver, which we're required to apply for every year. Copy of the waiver was forwarded to the county office. And happy to say that reading compliance, Mr. Materi did a great job of kind of reshaping how we're going to be supporting limited English proficient students across the district. Really working with the teachers, it's, again, exciting. Extended day, some things I want to talk about. First off, congrats to Mrs. Savas. We opened with five hundred and forty-two students, the largest opening we've ever had for extended day. She's actually still registering students, but that number continues to grow. Letters will be going home to all the parents with students enrolled in the program, as well as put on the website. Just reminding them that on our single section days, especially the three new ones that we have for professional development throughout the year, there is no extended day after school because the staff that we use to staff EDP is the same staff that we're trying to train during those times. I realize it's an inconvenience. One of the things I will say is we're trying to make sure that every second of professional development counts and by training those teachers, the program improves. It's the only way we can ensure their learning. The days occur once in January, once in March, and once in April. And we're informing everybody in September, so you have a proper amount of time to plan for those individual days. Also, I'm happy to announce that our partnership with the Middlelands Area YMCA continues. They just started advertising their EDP fitness classes that parents can sign their children into for the fall sessions. The information for parents can be found at every EDP location, as well as on our website and under our extended day program pages on the website. Happy to announce to the board that the district was selected randomly to field test the PAR assessments. The assessments will take place in March and in May. What's interesting, I had some conversations, we will not receive any data from the state on our students' performance. It's a true field test, because everything is sealed. But I will tell you, where it does help us is to make sure that we can practice our readiness for PAR and we're actually going to see firsthand exactly how the assessments are going to be rolled out so we can plan for the larger implementation when it comes from the state.
Does it count?
It doesn't count for anything, it's literally a field test. And again, in speaking with many of our teachers, they'd rather have the opportunity to practice before it counts. It's a non-threatening and it's interesting to see what the students are going to walk away with having to face with an online assessment of supposedly different rigor than the assessments that they've been used to impact. So, we'll give it a shot. We're a good partner. I want to talk a little bit about calendar. First reminder that the district is closed Friday, October eleventh, and on Election Day, November fourth, both for full day professional development. We've added these PD days through the year to ensure our staff can continue their learning and bring that learning back into the locker rooms. Also, while it's not reflected on the district calendar and it never has been because of some confusion or miscommunication, I want to state publicly, I've already emailed everyone, all the PTO events such as Halloween are running as usual, as they always have every year. So, if we've dismissed early, we're still dismissing. If we've had parents in, we're still having them. There have been no changes to that. The calendar never reflected that and still doesn't. But some people were concerned since we've been getting tighter with the calendar that because it didn't reflect that, it wasn't, we were changing something, which is not the case. Finally, as you see previously, and I keep trying to say this, for those who are planning, our graduation calendar is available on the main website, under Calendar, up at the top level navigation. It highlights the schedule for all graduations and how that schedule is being impacted should we be forced to use any of our resources as opposed to this. So, for people who are planning and have questions, it's all in one chart. And you can certainly contact a teacher or administrator if you have questions beyond the chart. It's there as we talk about in case you need that information. Upcoming events, we have open houses. Reminder that open houses do involve an early dismissal. All that is posted on the website. Our middle school is September twelfth, this week. This Thursday, elementary schools are all on the same night, September eighteenth. Our high school is September twenty-fifth. Want to remind everyone, September eleventh, the township is running its September nine-eleven ceremony, ten AM in front of town hall. It's about a twenty-minute ceremony and the, not the high school chamber singers are performing as they always do. The other piece I'd like to highlight, just as far as upcoming events, the Nellie Education Foundation is hosting its first annual awards dinner. The dinner is September nineteenth. There's information on our website. We've been emailing people out, I know people trying to get word out through the community. The Education Foundation supports solely the efforts of the district to make sure that our students have the absolute best resources and instructional environment. So, it's a great event. I know some of the other board members may be talking about it, but I wanted to remind people as well. One of the things we talked about since last, we've had our new teacher orientation. All of our new staff members had three full days and our staff members for the first time, who were in their second year, came back for two days of training. We spent almost the entirety of that beyond our security issues, dyftis training, technology and personnel issues that come, their meeting with the association. The remainder of that time, or the majority of that time, we spent focused on our common language and exploring what we expect of them as teachers and what resources we provide or train they will be given and what support we have to ensure their success because their success is our students' success. I know that some of our board members may talk about this, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention Nellie's first annual coaching academy. We had the entire athletic department in for three days of training. Mr. Kazinsky, Mr. Scolera were able to attend pieces of it. I'm sure they want to say a couple of words, but it wasn't your typical mandatory training where they come and they do their CPR, recertifications and things like that. It was three days where the coaches came together to figure out exactly what their purpose was within the district. It's not about winning and losing on the field, it's about winning and losing our students and how they can contribute, ensure that all of their efforts go beyond the athletic field, the athletic courts, in back into the school and we're developing the whole student. And I have to tell you, Mr. Power did a fantastic job on those coaches. The emails have been flying since, which is great. They're energized, they're engaged, and they're looking as excited as they've always been looking at different ways, the contribution they can make as coaches here in the district. And it really just was an exciting week. Mr. Villio, Mr. Williams are here. We had our high school freshman orientation on Monday, the twenty-sixth. Students received copies of the schedules, they toured the building. You have, again, those wide eyes of, oh my gosh, what am I getting into? We had thanks to all the staff who were there, kind of calming them down and answering questions and making sure we had a smooth opening. I think in March part two, that orientation, the opening of the high school was extremely smooth and the kids got right down to learn, so thank you for that. Our middle school orientation for grade seven students and new grade eight students took place on the twenty-eighth. They participated in the orientation, again, toward the building, practice opening their lockers. Still had to help with that the opening day. Mr. Scott was just here. We could spend a good fifteen, twenty minutes in the hallway opening lockers and making sure they were at their right lockers, but I think we've gotten past the locker issues and we're back into learning, so that's a good thing. Thank you to all the board members and the community members who came out for a gifted and talented presentation, which also took place on the twenty-eighth at six-thirty here in the building. We hosted an evening session to present our new specialist, Ms. Mary Ann Woods Murphy. And we talked about the current state of the program, how we're not losing anything that exists in the program, but how we're going to take the resources that are here and build toward a larger and more robust program that not just supports, doesn't just support our gifted and talented children, but raises the level of rigor for all of our students. Last piece, I want to talk about, anyway, talk about student performance tonight and next meeting, but our superintendent's goals will be presented to the academic committee for initial conversation, then we can send it forward in hopes that we can certify them on that.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. You have the presentation now?
Mr. President? Mr. President?
I'm sorry. I just mentioned the camera. I can't hear the camera. You have to swear.
Get a cord to the camera.
That's okay. We'll swear a little.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we're required by state law to make these kinds of presentations probably, but beyond requirement, we just think it's good practice. We've been talking about data for three years and we're two years, it's year three now. And again, try to break this up so we can ask some questions and start to build a picture throughout the year as to how we're performing. We're looking at more data and we're looking more deeply at the data. This data we're going to talk about today is data that we've been discussing at least the past two years. And again, to frame the presentation, this is the first presentation we have yet to receive back from the state, certain pieces of our data. As soon as we do, we can see where a presentation will happen of that piece of data. I thought it would be nice to break it up, make the presentation shorter and more focused. And then after we have the second presentation of this format, the presentation that happens after that is more about the analysis of where we're going. But again, from the board, known that the board has seen this because we're still putting together the last piece of the information. Some board members, the academic committee, see pieces of it, but not see the entire presentation. So, obviously, if there are questions, maybe one time, so we stop. Talk about purpose review, talk about the outline. I'm going to go through each of the pieces of data that we have and just talk about what they mean for us, where we've been in the past, where we still are right now, and what we're doing to make those changes happen. I'm sorry, I moved that this is the wrong presentation, that's why.
I was wondering why it says July. I still gave my [inaudible]. I sent them the [inaudible].
Factually, the students performed better than the presentation. Starting with our HESPA scores. We did receive our HESPA scores back. Again, all of our juniors are required to take them. The scores you're about to see is everyone who came through in sort of all three iterations. Again, as I normally do, no numbers, I'm trying to work in pictures. What you're going to see here, again, this is our total population. HESPA, again, like most of our state tests, three levels of performance based on scale scores. The students take these assessments, the State Department, its wisdom processes until raw data comes up with a scale score someplace between one hundred and three hundred. There are three levels of performance, partially proficient, which means not performing at grade level, proficient, which is grade level performance, and advanced proficient, which is beyond the grade level performance. The cutoffs in that scale from one hundred to three hundred, two hundred or below two hundred is partially proficient. From two hundred to two forty-nine would be considered proficient. Anything two fifty or above would be advanced proficient. As you can see here in the charts, it remains the same to try and give you a perspective as we go through the information. Nellie's always first, our district factor group, and those districts that are like us socioeconomically, and then the state performance. And as you can see, when you look at general performance on the HESPA, we are pretty much consistent in all three levels. One of the things I draw your attention to is you always want to find the top of the red and see how much is left because that's proficient. The blue plus to green are students who are proficient. As you can see here, we're performing pretty much exactly like our district factor grouping, both in the number of students who are partially proficient as well as proficient plus. Both the district factor grouping and Nellie are a little bit better as far as overall proficiency and just about equal with advanced proficiency. Again, a little thumb, I haven't made these presentations in a while. If you have to squint, it's not statistically significant. Okay, so, there's our total population, but we dig beyond that. Our general population, as you can see, you start to see some significant differences when it comes to our total number of students who are proficient. And our general education population, both the district factor group and Nellie significantly declined, whereas the state looks fairly similar to the last chart. As you can also see, our advanced proficient population has increased. There's more blue, less red and more blue, that's what we're targeting. If we move beyond general education to special education, you'll see the levels change for all three columns. But again, our special education performance compared to special education performance in our district factor grouping across the state is higher. There's less blue, so less advanced proficient. But if you talk about the percentage of students who are classified, who are proficient, not grade level, we have a higher percentage than both our district factor group and the state. And one of the things I point out to you is when we do the analysis, we were actually, we've been underperforming compared to our district factor grouping recently. So, now, suddenly, you start to see, again, it's, again, I would say it's significant, you don't have to squint, but there is a change in process where we're showing higher levels of proficiency in special ed than those connected nearest. And so, one of the things you're going to talk about, we talk about overall population and our overall scores compared with overall scores from other districts. Our specification population is outperforming, which means they're not necessarily bringing a line down when it comes to performance. And they're actually helping boost our scores overall comparatively. This has been Language Arts, now I turn to math, I'm sorry, still Language Arts, limited in English proficient. Again, as you can see, our students who are still learning or transitioning to English, again, similar scores are district factor grouping, but significantly better than the state. If we look at our HESPA mathematics scores, you're going to see some similar trends. Again, total population, almost three identical bars, which means we're performing like the general state is. It's not where we want to be, we want to start to see some movement. In order to do that, again, we dig down. In general education, we'll see, again, very similar. Solid, almost a third of our population's advanced proficient and we're only talking about thirteen and a half percent that are partially proficient. We're still constantly working, not only to limit, to reduce the red, but to increase the blue. When we switch to special education, in math now, you see a different trend than you saw in Language Arts, which is information that we take and we're using. Again, significantly less blue than both the district factor grouping and state and about the same amount of partially proficient students. So, this is something that we bring back. Again, the HESPA is constantly used to measure the high school. But what I've been trying to [inaudible] the teachers have known for a long time is that this isn't necessarily measured in junior year. It's measuring all the preparation that happened going up to junior year. Whether the student's with us from another district, it's all about the math preparation ahead of time. And we're going to talk more about that when we get to the advanced version. Limited English proficient, though, you notice significant differences for our district. This is actually what's supposed to happen. If you run it appropriate, and we have a bilingual waiver, we talked about the state improvement again today. When you run a program for students transitioning to another language, data actually shows, research shows, if you exit those students from the learning process, the bilingual process effectively, they're actually more likely to score higher than native speakers. For whatever reason, going through that process, students who actually exit appropriately with two languages perform higher if they're not assessed than students who've been based in a single language. And as you can see here, our students, we have significantly fewer who are partially proficient and we have significantly more, significantly more, who are advanced proficient. Again, so, talking about certain different populations, we're using the data to make sure we're working differently in different departments. Another assessment that we got back, I want to share because it highlights the efforts that we've been making, our teachers have been making, Mr. Vania at the high school has been making. The New Jersey Biology Competency test, something that will eventually be placed by, replaced by PAR. We've been giving this test for a number of years. Our students, again, similar charts, total population, you can see similar scores. Again, we have fewer, it's noticeable, partially proficient, and we also have the more advanced proficient. So, we're happy about those scores, but digging in again. In general education, we see even more similarity, which is why, as we move forward, there are special education scores here. Significant difference. So, we're seeing, again, pockets of excellence, pockets of impact that were having on student performance beyond the general trend. We're trying to highlight these and understand what's causing that. When I got the scores, I immediately picked up the phone and called Mr. Vania and said, which parts worked, which parts do we have to change? And he had a whole list of things. But again, kudos to our teachers. I mean, every student takes a biology assessment, takes it at the end of the year when they're taking biology. So, the curriculum is fresh in their mind, this is almost another exit test to point out what we have. So, you can see what's happening in our special education population. Limited English proficient, a trend that's carrying through. So, we have things here that are working, we're servicing the needs of different populations of students. We didn't stop there, though, with biology. Mr. Vania and I sat down and we started talking about how we're doing in biology year to year. And our total population, as you can see, through the course of the last three, over the last two years, we've reduced the number of students who are partially proficient and increased the number of students who are advanced proficient. Okay, and again, there's a balance here because from last year to this year, we have more students who are partially proficient, but we also have more students who are advanced. And again, the population's changed, it's not the same students. So, every year, while we do look at this longitudinal data, it's not cohort data where we're following student A across multiple years. There are different students with different challenges and how we meet those needs differently, changes from year to year. But so, our total population from year to year, you look at the general ed, it follows the trend. Again, that's the majority of our students, so you'd expect it to follow a similar trend. There is our special education numbers. Our numbers, not the whole state, not our district factor grouping, but how our special education students perform. Well, I'd like to tell people, again, our teachers are using data, they're using new instructional methods, they're focusing on issues that they're highlighting, they're trying to do as good a job as they can. We're supposed to get smarter as every year goes by. If we use the data appropriately, if we're shaping instruction differently. And as you can see, what has happened is a clear trend toward higher levels of proficiency. Where we had almost ninety percent of our students partially proficient and none of our students advanced proficient, we're now moving to we're below fifty percent of our students in special ed, partially proficient, and we've got, as you see, it's a little over ten percent of our students advanced proficient, making strides. We want to start moving in this direction across all of our demographics. But as you can see, I think when we sit down and we give our teachers the tools that they need, the time to use them, learn them, look at data, again, we've only started to scratch the surface with a lot of the tools, performance matters has now been here two years, just under two years. We haven't really started to leverage our, but again, Mr. Vania and his science department, those are, it's more the pockets where we actually have one ahead using a few of our [inaudible]. I did not have limited English proficient data across the three years. Okay, but again, you can start to see that trend evolve. Other information we got back, thanks to Mr. Villio. We always look at our SATs. Again, I said at least too many numbers, but here are the numbers, I'll put the presentation up that people want to look. Where we have been for the past is just below the median. Okay, we were just below the median, which is certainly not a place that we want to be. We want our middle, we way above the middle of the median. When we took these numbers and put them into a chart, again, Mr. Villio uses this to communicate to colleges and universities how our students are doing. The big thing I want to show, show everyone, again, it's hard to see on the overhead, but the first column of each of the triples is Nellie. The second column is New Jersey and the third column is [inaudible]. As you can see, from last year to this year, as we try to target different things, there's a significant jump in the performance of our students across all three areas of the [inaudible]. We want to keep moving here. Now, that size of a jump, that's a huge jump. We want to try and hit that every year. And again, one of the things we've been talking about, if you, if you signed up with Mr. Villio, she's sending out these guidance blasts on a daily basis. Things like she just sent out to parents, web resources they can use to help prepare their kids for the FETs. This is not only for high school students. You can start using, I know Mr. Williams makes sure, he uses his words of the day, every day in the high school with students. Okay, but if we're waiting to high school, until high school, to start addressing their success in these assessments, it's too late. We have to make sure we're addressing this appropriately going back to pre-teen. And we're talking about that. Mr. Villio and her counselors, the new, enlarged department, really focused on a P12 approach to guidance and getting parents the right information at the right time, what makes sense for kindergarten parents versus eighth grade parents versus the high school. Again, so, kudos to the teachers that are focusing on those areas in general. Where I want to focus most of the time, those are advanced places. We talk a lot about this. This is directly correlated between the instruction that goes on at our high school and then nationally standardized tests. I'm happy to report, as we've been pushing, we've had significantly more students in those classes and more of those students were taking assessments. Had about eighty more assessments than we've had in the past. Okay, so, more tests. Now, when you ask more kids to jump in and more kids to take these assessments, you expect the scores, if you're lucky, to stay the same, possibly go down usually because there is a learning curve as we push more rigor. This chart shows the number of scores from last year and this year, 2012, 2013, based on the score the students got, one through five. AP tests are, again, norm records at the end of the day, one through five. Everyone gets a score between one and five. Three is considered passing by college board. Most colleges are looking for fours to give credit. And if you're going to major in that area, if you get credit at all, it's just going to be for a five. So, that's the perspective. This is difficult, and when I put this out there just to show you where everyone fell from year to year, it doesn't give you perspective because, again, the number of assessments given that our students took I mean, they're taking CAP one year and statistics another, or maybe taking social studies versus other. Okay, but as you can see, the number of students scoring a one actually dropped by two percentage points, and that's with more students taking the test. The number of students scoring a two, okay, dropped by four percentage points, which means we pushed more of our students to the passing levels. And as you can see, the biggest jump that we had was in the score of the three, getting students over that college board expectation of what's not proficient versus what is. Okay, so this is how we start to use the scores. If you combine those, you had a jump between our students who were, quote, considered failing the AP assessment and those who are passing. So we're now up from the fifties to the sixty percent, so we want to keep moving forward. Mr. Williams is having a meeting with all of our AP Advanced Placement teachers tomorrow, who are really trying to focus on the rigor. Again, what I'd like to point out is, if we wait until the students go into AP to try and address this, too late. And we're not doing that. We're trying to push through our teachers, through our curriculum, through the rigor, the program of studies, higher levels of expectation. We're also trying to get the guidance department and everyone else to get the word out to parents, and you start talking about these things way before high school. We want everyone in Nully High School taking at least one Advanced Placement, et cetera, course and assessment. If you're going to college, the college board states, they run right to the assessment that this is work equivalent to a entry-level freshman course in the subject. We believe with the supports we give in the high school, our seniors specifically, are certainly ready to take courses, they're going to be expected to take six months from now. So we have to push more students to feel confident and get in, and we're using our data to try and do that. Our AP scholar numbers, students who are being recognized for exceptional performance on our Advanced Placement, as you can see, there's a direct trend from 11 to 13, the numbers are going up. So you want to keep pushing that, and that's just with specific things we target. Imagine if we can build the system we need starting in kindergarten and move those students appropriately to the point where they're entering high school knowing, I want to take these rigorous courses, I'm prepared to take these rigorous courses, and then they take the courses. One of the things we're struggling with is offering more students access to Advanced Placement because such a small population of the building still is taking them, they end up being singletons and difficult to schedule. The more students we get taking these courses, the more courses we can offer, and that's what we're working toward. At this point, those are the pieces of assessment that we have large scale that everyone will look at. The next presentation will be on our ASVES scores, similar format, shorter because just the ASVES. You might read our some math from third grade to grade three. After we make that performance to kind of go with this one, then we'll start the comparative analysis.
The numbers look good, and I know that's what we're all here for, trying to increase those scores as we move forward, and the presentation is clear, and it shows that we're all making some progress slowly, but I know it's the right direction.
That's what I'm asking, keep things keeping moving the right way.
Mr. Reed?
First, explain to the DFC, was that someone that the state was opting not to go with which comparisons that you put in?
They're not, they're not leaving. It's a district factor grouping, so socioeconomic status of different districts, we're in FT districts, I still think it's helpful. One of the things we talked about, unfortunately, the large ego in education, scale-wise, SES is the single most predictive factor, unfortunately, which is why our performance is middle to middle, because we're in the middle to middle on SES ones. And what we're trying to do is buck that trend. So I hope the state keeps providing that information, because if not, we'll compile that around, because we want to make sure we're bucking those trends that are holding districts down or holding districts in one spot, we want them to pass. But you can see, there are places where we're starting to do it.
Thank you, Ross. Committee reports. Mr. Bancheck? Mr. Reed?
The next academic meeting will be next Tuesday, September seventeenth, so love your time.
The next academic meeting will be Monday night, the sixteenth.
The next academic meeting will be Monday night, the sixteenth. Now, we've come to the course of this meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board, and in this section, we allow questions for comments on only the resolutions addressed this tonight's agenda. On board regulation, our board regulations allow twenty minutes for these communications. Each person will be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic entirely. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each every time you address the board. First person come forward. We're going to resolutions. Mr. Reed?
Yes, Mr. President, I make a motion to move academic resolutions one through two as written.
Go, go, Mr. Cooper.
This is Anjek Martin, yes. Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cookedah?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sazada?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes. Administration, Mr. Sazada?
Mr. President, move Resolution one through three as written.
Need a second? I'm sorry, I apologize. Go, go, Mr. Cooper.
This is Anjek Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cookedah?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sazada?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes. Mr. Cooper, take finance, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I move finance resolutions one, two, and three as written.
Go, go, Mr. Cooper.
This is Anjek Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cookedah?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sazada?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
You know, just, we want to thank the Villias, no Jules here, probably watching the kids, and thank you for the donation, obviously. I know you love them, we highly appreciate it. But again, thanks for these kinds of donations, it's not the first time we've done so, I'm sure it was a good use.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Scolera, personnel, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Personnel Agenda Resolution number one as written.
Second.
Go, go, Mr. Cooper.
This is Anjek Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cookedah?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sazada?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes. At this time, in this section, we allow questions or comments on all schools of ladies matters. Our regulations allow thirty minutes for this communication. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes, and we actually try to stay within these requirements. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. Anyone have any questions at this time? Any old business coming forward, board? On the old business, I certainly would like to, if Mr. Scolera wants to pick up on a comment on the coaches academy, I think Mr. Pyro and Russ, our superintendent, put together a great program. I attended quite a bit of the sessions, I was impressed with the feedback that the coaches were giving to the program, and I think it's long overdue, I know that I've spoken to some coaches since then, they were apprehensive at first, but glad that they were able to come together as a group, and that's a great program, I love, I'm new in terms of the work that we love.
Yes, I have to also echo the same sentiments, in fact, that Mr. Kuzinski and I sat in the back, and while I was back there and on one of the breaks, and in between, I've never seen so many coaches with laptops out taking notes, who was writing notes, who were talking about things, guest lectures, this wasn't just done by in-house, but guest lectures, program setup, it was phenomenal. The next day, I saw Mr. Pyro, and I said, and I'll call him Joe, because we go back a long time, I said, Joe, it was phenomenal, he did a great job, it's come a long way, the programs are going, and he goes, they have to give the credit to Mr. Laszlo, he goes on, because he's the one that's driving. So that's what he personally said to me the following night. So I thought that was also a great sentiment about the superintendent, a good comment by Mr. Pyro, great program. But I have two other things, Mr. Kuzinski, if you would like to announce.
What?
I have two other items from the business manager, I assure you.
We're still on the new business, I'm sorry, getting back to old business, and again, I want to applaud the teachers, it was a busy week for everybody, but I was able to sit in on a couple of the programs that the teachers were dealing with, and I've been here for many years, and it seemed like there was a new excitement. It's a credit to all of us. Any more old business, new business?
Yes, Mr. Kuzinski, I had a great meeting with James Riley, our new music director in Boston, I forget his last name, my bad. Valleys are a group, I mean, well, Austin's, I mean, I tell everybody to call me Fred, he said, call him Austin, and before you know it, I forgot his last name, I apologize, it's not for any good reason, but the energy that Austin had was phenomenal, you know, he really reminds you of a young Mr. Kandari, Mr. Riley, very organized, tremendously organized, we talked about programs, music, what's responds, where to go, what needs to be done, told me about what he built in the Quanic, he built the band, like in the very kind of built the choir here, we spent an hour together, in fact, our principal, Mr. Williams walked in while he's in that conversation, so I got to see him for a little while, but great, great program, looking forward to having that on the music. And one last thing, and it was mentioned, I didn't want to do another old business, but while Mr. Villia is sitting here, my son is in the high school, I'm getting all these notices, I'm hearing all these different programs, it's tremendous, and I just want to point out, and I talked about my son, Mr. Laszlo, a couple minutes ago, and he came to me and I said, his PSAT, he said, if I take it, does it count against me, I'm only a sophomore? So I said, no, Eric, he said, well, then I'll take it. So the only thing I should say, maybe we need to clarify that, because he was concerned he wasn't ready for it, and he just wanted to count.
You'd be attached to it in your lessons.
With the college, with the college of B.
He's attached to you, sir.
Oh, I don't want to attach it, no, no.
It's in there.
So I apologize, but great job. No, the information, the whole point of this still was, the information's really coming out, it's great going to the kids and the parents, it's a great job, I just wanted to recognize your honesty.
And again, I have to very, very understand why, it's, I know it's been going on, it just seems like it's either more exciting now or more with the technology that's going on, it is, the word is getting out, the parents are aware, the students are certainly aware of it, and I think our board members are even more in tune with what's going on.